Are there, um, I need a motion to come out of executive session, please.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? I'll second it. All right. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Do we have any motions coming out of executive session?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I have several motions. First one, I move to approve the proposed scope of services and compensation provided by Burr Foreman regarding further services involving the Jasper Ocean Terminal, and authorize the administrator to take such actions and execute the agreement as discussed in executive session.
Second.
I've been properly moved in second. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
I, Madam Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
I have another motion. I would like to have, uh, laws of, uh, D. Thomas Johnson, subject to confirmation by county administrator to work on Jasperport.
Second.
And properly move in second. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chairman. Like to have another motion. I'd like to move to expand the scope of work authorized to be undertaken by Ray Jones of the Parker Poe Law Firm on behalf of Jasper County to include discussions and negotiations involving economic development projects in the city of Hardyville, with compensation to be the same rates as in the existing agreement with the Parker Poe Law Firm.
Do I hear a second? Been properly moving second. All in favor of say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. At this time, we're gonna call for the pledge of allegiance by, um, Councilman John Kemp, and invocation by Mr. Bowles. Pledge of allegiance. Mm-hmm. Can't hear you, John.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public for which it stands.
And one nation under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Oh. Okay.
Our most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we humbly bow our heads, Father God. We thank you and praise you for all your many blessings in life, dear Lord. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross for our sins. We pray, dear Lord, not only for our home and our county, but our nation and our world, dear Lord. We see what's going on in Afghanistan and in other countries, dear Lord, and we just pray that, that, dear Lord, we'll look towards you for guidance, for direction, and decisions that our leaders make, dear Lord. We pray for those suffering, those, dear Lord, who are facing, uh, inhumane actions from past, dear Lord. Pray, dear Lord, that, that your healing hand will be placed upon those people, dear Lord. We ask a special blessing tonight, dear Lord, for our first responders and law enforcement, those people who are risking their lives to protect ours and the public. We ask a blessing upon those who are suffering from COVID-19, dear Lord, those who are sick. We keep, dear Lord, the Wall family in our prayers, uh, is a member of our transportation committee and a member of our community, close friend and family. Dear Lord, as they have the services tomorrow for Mr. Weldon Wall, we ask a special prayer and blessing upon all of their family, dear Lord, in their time of loss. Dear God, we ask a special blessing upon our council members, dear Lord, that decisions we make will be pleasing in their sight. It will do what's best for our citizens, dear Lord, and we ask these things in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, moving right along. Um, the approval of the agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Do I hear a second? Properly moving second by John Kemp. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Out, Mr. Atkins. He's muted. On mute. Okay, now you can hear us. Can you hear us now, Alvin?
I can hear you now.
Okay, all right. All right, approval, the approval of the minutes from six, seven, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Properly move in second. All in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we will have the presentation from, uh, President and CEO of the Southern Carolina Alliance, presenting on the Sherwood Track. Bye, Mr. Black, Danny Black.
Miss Chairman, Mr. Chairwoman, this is John Fleming. I'm gonna start the presentation. We're actually gonna tag team this. Uh, Sandy, my, Danny will go through it. Sandy is gonna share her screen, and it says Danny. Um, we had prepared this presentation to be live, so this board that you're seeing was to be a very large board on an easel and on your display screen in front. I know it's difficult to see on a laptop or an iPad. We, uh, appreciate everybody's indulgence as we move through this. We're gonna talk about the Sherwood Track. I'm gonna talk about all of the public items that are kinda in the large area around Sherwood. So in the middle of the screen, and Sandy is controlling this, is the Sherwood Track. It is labeled number one. And so as everyone is aware, Southern Carolina has worked with Jasper County and the state of South Carolina to purchase about five hundred and fifty acres within the Sherwood Track, and we have an option on the remainder, remaining area. So approximately thirteen hundred and forty acres are under control, public control, basically. And the goal of this project is to generate jobs and capital investment, manufacturing and distribution potentially for Jasper County and Hardyville, the region overall. So that's number one on this screen, but other large public infrastructure projects that are already funded and are bringing tax dollars to the area, number two is one, which is Exit Three. Um, and we all know that that has been approved at the SIB Board. It still has a long way to go, but it is an approved infrastructure project moving forward within the immediate area of the Sherwood Track. And Sandy is scrolling up a little bit. You see the number three coming on, and that is SCOT, SCDOT's project to widen nine ninety-five from the Georgia line up to Exit Thirty-three. Now that includes some improvements to Exit Five and also some extensive upgrades to Exit Eight. And that's a DOT project. It's under their purview, and they have a projected completion date of twenty twenty-eight. Again, a large amount of public funds being spent in this corridor area. Now she's gonna scroll down to number four, which you are all already aware and have probably seen some of this. Number four is again, South Carolina DOT working to widen Highway Seventeen. That is under construction, although it may not look like it's under construction. They're doing a lot of pre-construction work to build and expand that to four lanes. That is already working, and it has a fourth quarter twenty twenty-five completion date. As we slide just to the left of that, number five is Georgia DOT is spending, again, public, all of these are public dollar projects. They're spending public tax dollars to replace the Houlihan Bridge. Now, some of you are aware that bridge has been weight limited due to some damage on the bridge, and so we, Southern Carolina, along with other industry associations, have worked with the Georgia DOT to make sure that bridge gets replaced as quickly as possible because it affects uh, South Carolina's ability to get to, uh, the Georgia port. So that is a design build. They decided to go design build so it could be faster. They're gonna let that bid uh, fourth quarter of this year with an anticipated completion date of third quarter of twenty twenty-four. So they're gonna rebuild three bridges in that amount of time in public tax dollars, uh, working to improve this entire corridor. If Sandy slides up just slightly, number six, and then Sandy, if you'll zoom out, the red, right there, the red line that you see outlining the entire area. That's Buford Jasper Water and Sewer Authority is doing a master water and sewer study that they're paying for with internal funds, so a publicly funded study to identify the water and sewer needs for the next twenty-five years for the entire corridor. Now, again, if you look at that graphic, the Sherwood Site, which is a publicly controlled site, is right in the middle of this entire area we're talking about. All these public dollars being spent to improve the Sherwood Site and the entire corridor to bring jobs and investment. Another item that's not on here because it's, we couldn't number it, but Dominion Power is our partner working to bring transmission level power because we've had projects say we need an enormous amount of power on the Sherwood Track. They have decided, essentially, moving forward without a project in hand to get transmission level power to Sherwood and the surrounding areas. That's in progress and will be completed by fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three. So all these dates specifically to Sherwood mean that if a project lands and comes tomorrow and says we need twenty megawatts of power, we need a lot of water and sewer, and even natural gas, Dominion has coupled the natural gas in with the power transmission, we can meet, you know, a timeframe that any industry would have. No industry can build a facility as big as you're gonna see as Sandy moves into the next slide. Um, when she talks about it, those would take that long to build that facility. The public dollars being spent to prepare the Sherwood Track and the surrounding corridor to support Jasper County into the future is already well underway. And I'm gonna kinda turn this over to Sandy to talk about the history of Sherwood and what we've done to date, and you can get a feel for the type of projects and why we're doing all this.
Sherwood Track first came to our attention back in twenty sixteen, which seems like forever ago, when a large industry actually discovered the track. It was not on the market. And we began working with them. It was a billion-dollar project um, that is still out there. It, it, it kinda died of some of the problems with internally, but we worked with them for over a year on the Sherwood Track. It is, as John said, fourteen hundred and thirty-eight acres, all told. And as we worked with Project Silver Thunder, we began doing some due diligence, and Southern Carolina really looked at this with fresh eyes because, again, this property was not being marketed. And we saw that it had all the features of a mega site. Throughout the nation, the need for mega sites are there, but the mega sites are very rare because we have pretty much developed most of our industrial property nationwide. But a mega site needs specific things such as large contiguous acreage, rail, access to interstate, access to port, um, which this has it all. Large volume utilities, but more importantly, access to large workforce. So throughout the country, it's becoming more and more difficult to develop mega sites because all of those factors need to be in play. As we worked with Silver Thunder, and then in twenty seventeen, a tire company, actually two, Cricket and Green were looking there. Both liked them, but there was too raw of the site. Southern Carolina took the initiative and the lead to step out, and in twenty seventeen, we obtained an option on the entire fourteen hundred and thirty-eight acres. Once we had it under option and control, then we also began to work with all of our partners to begin due diligence, full due diligence. And what that means is that's a complete exploration of the dirt. Everything from wetlands to cultural, um, species, to, uh, cultural history, to threatened and endangered species, really a thorough look at the environmental impacts and a kind of assessment of the land to make sure that it is a good site for development. In twenty nineteen, we were able to purchase five hundred acres, and that's this area that's kinda in the green and yellow. The intent for this portion of Sherwood is to locate a large manufacturing plant. We have had tremendous project, uh, project activity on this, as you know. As we've moved along, and again, during this entire time, we've been doing due diligence. Due diligence is quite expensive and time, it takes an enormous amount of time on a piece of property this size. We do, yes?
Move your slide up. You're still on the slide I was looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry. My screen is showing the other. Can y'all see the green side? No? All right, let me try again.
No.
Oh, wow. Okay, let me, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and I'm gonna try it again. Thank you, John. Okay, is that better?
That's it?
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Well, let me point that out again. So the entire parcel that you're looking at, that's the fourteen hundred and thirty-eight acres. Um, this area to the left, kinda in the green and yellow, master, uh, planning, that is about approximately five hundred acres that Southern Carolina was able to purchase that really is well-suited for a large manufacturing plant, a transformational project, a BMW, a Volvo, a Gulfstream, a Boeing, and we have had enormous traffic on that from large users. The remaining about eight hundred acres is, um, we were in conversation with the developer to develop it as a logistics park. So when we talk about Sherwood, we're talking about the entire acreage, but there are really two different projects. There's the manufacturing piece that's completely under control. There's the logistics side that is very well-suited. You can see the black pokey dotted areas. Those are wetlands. And so the layouts have been done to, uh, basically work around those and mitigate the impacts as much as possible. The due diligence has been completed. We are in conversation, you can see, with the, um, conceptuals to try to move forward and fully developing this and really, um, transforming Jasper County because the purpose of developing this park is to develop Jasper County and the city of Hardyville, but it is for everyone. It is to bring high-paying jobs to, uh, the people of Jasper County. I think most of you know that Jasper has the second lowest per capita income in the state, and the right to change that is high, um, high-skill, well-paying jobs. So all of the, um, and I won't give you the entire list of the due diligence, but just to give you an idea, the wetlands are done. Um, threatened and endangered species have been done as geotechnical, cultural resource, seismic study, and, uh, certain title history as well as, uh, survey. So all of that is in hand. We are working with our partners now to develop, to establish and develop, um, some wetland mitigation because that's gonna be needed for the entire area, not just for the Sherwood Track, but for the entire seven, Highway Seventeen corridor. I'll let Danny talk about next steps, but we are very excited. It's been a long journey since twenty sixteen, um, to get all of this done. It, it takes a long time anyway, especially when you can't just write a check, but we're on the cusp of really exciting things, and we wanted to really bring everybody up to speed on where we are. Danny?
Yes, ma'am. I, I just wanna fill in a couple of blanks. As you all know, uh, we went through a process in trying to figure out how to develop this property in the right way. Um, again, as you know, we got, uh, money from the state legislature a few years ago to buy the five hundred acres. We wish we could have gotten enough money to buy the entire site, but it was not feasible. So what we did, we just kept the option on it and went out basically and put it up for bid, sort of, so to speak. We did an RFP with developers. Three developers came to us and made presentations to the committee of SCA. We selected a potential development partner who basically came in with the idea of buying the entire eight hundred acres that's in, uh, not the manufacturing side, but the logistics side, and said, "We will buy your option, buy y'all out, take the land, and develop it into a logistics park to serve the ports." If you remember, the legislature basically told us in using the funds that were generated for us, we had to use, had to go after a port user. So obviously, logistics warehousing is a port user. We selected a, uh, development company. We're not ready yet to, uh, tell you the name of the company. We will be shortly. But the intention is that the development company has gone through their due diligence with the intention of finishing, uh, agreements with the town of Hardyville and a development agreement and with the county, and the incentives that the state may put into this as well, and I'll go through those in just a second, but the intention is to finish all of this up by late September, and the reason that we're pushing for September, our option year turns over and the price goes up. So it's in their interest and our interest to get this project finished by late September, closed out and finished. With the intent that they will develop the property, as you see laid out, with specific warehousing, logistics, and our manufacturing. And the reason I say, uh, manufacturing is, in this agreement that we have with the company, uh, they are marketing this eight hundred acres as long, as well as we are, and if we should bring in a particular project that could be cited on their eight hundred acres when they do purchase it, they are obligated to give that, uh, uh, piece of property to a project that we should bring in. So there's a mutual agreement that we can go out and look for, uh, manufacturing or, uh, uh, different types of industry, not just logistics, and we can cite them on that eight hundred acres as well. The intention, again, is to develop this property as fast as we can because we wanna get jobs in. We do not want to break up the five hundred acres at this point because we promised you, we promised the state, we promised our ports, that we would use the taxpayer, uh, money that we, um, uh, got through legislature to go after mega projects, and we wanna continue to do that, but we also don't wanna give up an opportunity to develop jobs as fast as we possibly can. And so that's why we're kinda concentrating on logistics warehouse side with the developer now. Now, there are several issues. Uh, some of you have asked me, "Why aren't we moving faster?" We would if we could. As Sandy has said, we've spent three years almost doing due diligence across this fourteen hundred acre track. We've done everything we possibly could to speed it up, but you also gotta have infrastructure. As John mentioned, you gotta have power, you gotta have natural gas to meet the needs of all this development. You also have to have, uh, uh, the mitigation on these wetlands because we will disturb some wetlands. So you gotta have a mitigation bank in place that you can go and trade out credits or, or trade out properties to be able to develop. That, uh, was a shocker to us when this came about, that we didn't have any leftover, uh, properties in the bank for this particular area of the state. So John is going to, uh, and Sandy is going to the state of South Carolina and asked them to help us find mitigation banks and expand that so we can have a chance for a developer or a future project to come in and develop without a whole lot of issues and a lot of money having to be spent for mitigation. That's in process. It's not in place yet, but it is in process. And I can tell you with the, the folks we've worked with so far, uh, with the Corps of Engineers, with our engineering partners, et cetera, it is going much faster and much smoother than we thought. So they have, obviously, uh, have seen the opportunities that are coming here, and they're working with us. We're working with, um, Buford Jasper Water Authority too, to look at the entire region, but what do we need to do immediately to make sure we got the capacities necessary for the water and sewer needs at the Sherwood Park, period, both sides? That's being developed now. It's a, a very large figure. Uh, I don't even think Marty Salz could write a check for the amount of money we've got to spend on water and sewer. So we're gonna try to figure out what the cost is just for Sherwood, and then have a phased opportunity, uh, to develop that entire seventeen corridor. But it's, it's big dollars, as you, as most of you will realize. So that's moving forward too. At the moment, we're in the process of working with the town of Hardyville through our development, uh, partnership to see what types of things have to be done for zoning, for development agreement, uh, necessary items, et cetera. And as we're working through that, we'll be coming to the county shortly, excuse me, to work on the tax side of what we will be proposing for this entire track uh, as a, a simple, uh, gesture to help, um, uh, recruit the types of industries that we're looking for. We also are working with the state, looking at incentives. Uh, we do have a couple of projects that the state can put some incentive dollars or grant money into, and we're trying to develop that as quickly as we can so we can get this process started. Um, we will shoot for an announcement. Uh, hopefully by the first of September. That's what we're, uh, trying to do in, in naming the developer and getting that going. Um, and as soon as we can do that, uh, of course, you will know beforehand, uh, when that, uh, announcement comes up. But the intention is to keep these whole as a complete fourteen hundred acres for development, but trying to focus in on logistics warehousing on one end and manufacturing jobs on the other end uh, is our plan and our focus that will bring the best opportunity for development that we can. So I'll stop at this point and, and ask for any questions of any of us that you may have.
Any questions?
Danny, uh, on the Buford Jasper Water and Sewer, how is their, uh, ability to provide the water and sewer for the, for the development there? I mean, how far off are they from being able to provide what, what is needed?
Uh, Mr. Salz, at this point, we're going through, uh, uh, basically an entire investigation of that, and a project, uh, performer has been basically developed and will be issued shortly to us. So we'll need, we'll know shortly what we need for the entire area. And I'm gonna tell you upfront, it's a big figure. But what we're trying to do is to make sure we have enough ability today to provide water, sewer, power, and natural gas to the first portions of development. Now, you heard John mention a while ago, it's two, three, four, five years to develop any of these particular items. So what we're trying to do is to make sure we can develop and, and provide for those first two or three projects right off the bat, and we, we are pretty much in agreement that can be done. However, as larger, more, um, higher users come into the area, then we've got to develop that. So we feel pretty good about the first two or three areas that we want to, uh, put up spec buildings on, our development buildings. After that, we've got a lot of work to do. And I'll, I'll say this because you guys have heard about all the, the, the money that's been, gonna be flowing down from lord knows everywhere, uh, infrastructure money, et cetera. We don't know what that really means, um, but we certainly wanna take advantage from the state standpoint, from the region standpoint, and the, the county and town level to make sure we're taking advantage of every opportunity we can to use as much money that's being given to us as we can, but, you know, somebody's gotta pay for it. So it's, there's a long-range plan, but we feel good about the short term as well.
Thank you, Danny.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, can I ask, I need to ask Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yes, sir.
Um, I heard you said, um, um, seventeen will be turned into a full lane?
Correct. DOT has that construction now.
Um, but as a full lane, what, from Georgia, back, um, back to Hardyville?
No. Full lane, partially to Hardyville. It doesn't go all the way back to the four lane. In DOT's infinite wisdom, there will be a small area that doesn't get four lane, but for the most old road.
Highway three fifteen. That's where it's gonna stop.
Yes.
Let me, let me ask you another question. When, um, when, um, when, um, when are they gonna fix some of these bad rules that already bad?
Well, that's a really good question, and I wish I could answer that. Uh, we, we, we can report what DOT is doing, and, uh, the Low Country Transportation Committee probably would be the best answer for that, um, 'cause I'm right there with you. I drive on some of those roads that I wish they would fix.
I mean, because I look at, I look at a lot of people that, that that's still paying road fee, and a lot of people's cars getting messed up, and I think some of these, I think some of these small roads like seventeen further back need to be done.
Reverend, this is Danny. Uh, we agree with you. We wish we could set priorities, but that has not been, we haven't gotten a telephone call from DOT asking for our opinion yet, uh, but we do agree that's wheeling the road a lot, and, uh, there are a lot of roads that need to be worked on, hopefully, and Hopefully in our lifetime, we'll see some of that done.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm just looking at the little man keep getting pushed back to the woods. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, darling. All right, anybody else? And you know, um, um, Councilman Atkins, let me tell you, it was a long, hard struggle to get seventeen full lane up to three fifteen. We had to put our money together from the low country. We couldn't spend all our monies that we got, that we received from, oh, what's the name of the thing? We had to put it all there. That's how this road is getting paid. Stayed out, no money.
But they taking all money though.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, Madam Chair, I'll say this, if our name was Charleston rather than Jasper County, we would have these roads paid. That's all I'm gonna say.
That's right, or Greenville.
Or Greenville, yes.
Madam Chair, without any other questions, we're finished. So we appreciate the opportunity. We will be going down to Hardyville on September second, I believe it is, and giving the presentation to them as well. And then in the meantime, we'll be back to you guys and to the town of Hardyville with the the final touches that we need to get this project done. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. All right, at this time, we're going to open the floor to the public. Did we have, um, any, um, comments?
I mean, we didn't receive any public comments for this meeting.
Okay. Let's move on to the resolution. A David Tetter, Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, Amendment to Employment Agreement between Jasper County and Andrew P. Folger.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. This resolution implements what council determined was the proper course back in the budget session when we, when the council was considering an across-the-board two and a half percent pay increase as Mr. Folger is on a contract employee. It's necessary to amend the contract to reflect that. This resolution merely implements that two and a half percent pay raise that everyone else got. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any question from any of the council members at this time? I'm going to call for motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Do I hear a second? It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Andrew Folger, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, to declare certain property to be surplus and authorize a sale for disposition school district used vehicle.
Madam Chair, members of council, I want to rely a little bit on our finance director, Ms. Burgess, to help me through this one. But as I understand it, this resolution, it's a standard resolution that we bring before you to declare any public property surplus before you sell or dispose of it. In this instance, it's really being done after the fact, when it was, when it was caught. Apparently, a vehicle went from the county to the school district. And Ms. Burgess, I don't know if you have any details about how and when that happened.
Not, it was, it has been in the school district's possession for quite a while, even before the current finance director at the school district was in place there.
The school district assumed it was theirs, I guess, and went about selling this and disposing of it for fifteen hundred dollars. And upon the process of processing the paperwork, realized that it was titled in the county's name. So this is a vehicle that is worth fifteen hundred dollars that they have already sold. And as a matter of cleaning up and audit trail, requesting that you consider adopting this resolution this evening that would officially declare it even after the fact as surplus property for the county.
Okay. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion to sell the vehicle.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Ordinance, Lisa Wagner, third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, amend the official zoning map of Jasper County so as to transfer a property bearing Jasper County Tax Map Number zero eight four zero 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 two zero six five from the residential zone to the community commercial zone on the Jasper County Official Zoning Map, three five eight Chippewailla Road.
Madam Chair and council members, the subject property consists of point nine zero acres and is located at three fifty-eight Chippewailla Road. The applicant has requested a zoning map amendment to have the property designated as community commercial. The property is currently zoned residential. The property was developed as a commercial property prior to nineteen seventy-five and has previously served as a store and a nightclub. The countywide rezonement project in two thousand and seven made the commercial use nonconforming. The applicant would like to establish a nonprofit social club, which is not allowed in the residential zoning district. However, a social club is allowed in the community commercial zoning district. According to the two thousand and eighteen Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area as a hamlet, which serves as commercial centers for everyday needs. Small-scale commercial development should be allowed with proper design. The adjacent parcels are zoned residential with community commercial nearby. Adjacent land uses are residential and vacant property. There are several commercial businesses nearby, which includes two churches, a store, a restaurant and a fire protection business. The subject property is accessed by Chippewailla Road, which is a two-lane state-maintained highway classified as a limited local road. The planning commission recommends approval to have the request, to have the property designated as community commercial.
Okay. Any questions? I call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to to have the third reading agreed to three five eight Chippewa Road to change it from residential zone to community commercial.
Okay.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Lisa Wagner, consideration of the first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County as to transfer a property bearing Jasper County Tax Map Number zero six three dash three eight dash zero one dash zero one three from the residential zone to the community commercial zone on the Jasper County Official Zoning Map, seven six Suite William Road. And this is the first reading.
Subject property consists of point five five acres and is located at seventy-six Suite William Road. The applicant has requested a zoning map amendment to have the property designated as community commercial. The property is currently zoned residential. The applicant would like to establish a restaurant at this location. Their property was redeveloped in February two thousand and seven as a restaurant. The countywide rezonement project made this property nonconforming in November two thousand and seven. While the property has previously been used as a restaurant, the use has ceased for more than twelve months, losing its legal nonconforming status. According to the two thousand and eighteen Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area as urban transition, which are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by the municipality. For these areas that experience new development or redevelopment, consideration should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. The adjacent parcels are zoned residential with the town limits of Ridgeland nearby. Adjacent land uses are residential and commercial. The subject property is accessed by Suite William Road, which is a two-lane state-maintained highway classified as a limited local road. The planning commission recommends approval of the request to have the property designated as community commercial.
Okay. Any questions? All right, call for a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Andrew Folger, public hearing and third reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-one three, authorizing the executive and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by the, by and between Jasper County, South Carolina, the county, a company known to the county as Palmetto Electric Co-op are in cooperation, acting for itself, one or more affiliates and other project sponsors collectively, the company pursue of which the county shall convene to accept certain negotiable fees in lieu of avaloring taxes with respect to an establishment and our expansion of certain facilities in the county. The project takes the second and second of those matters relating there formerly known as Project Light.
Madam Chair, members of council, I'm just going to do the introduction here. You've had two readings of this. This is up for your final read after the benefit of a public hearing. But tonight, as the chairwoman mentioned, it is no longer formerly Project Light, but it is now Palmetto Electric Cooperative. It's an exciting time for everyone in the county to commend Palmetto Electric on their investment in the community. And I, I, I want to turn this over to Ms. Sandy Steele and Ms. Ashley Feaster. Sandy, do you have anything to say? Or perhaps you'd like to introduce Ashley? Do you have a presentation to give prior to the public hearing?
On behalf of Southern Carolina Alliance, thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. We are excited to bring this project to you for final consideration and public hearing. Palmetto Electric Cooperative needs no introduction in our community. They are wonderful stewards and partners, and we're thrilled to be able to facilitate this for them. I'd like to introduce, most of you know her, Ashley Feaster with Palmetto Electric to give you, answer any questions and also to give you a brief overview of the project. Ashley.
Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you all for having me here. We're very excited to be where we are today. As you all know, part of the Palmetto Electric Cooperative mission is to provide leadership and support to the communities we serve. And just like we did over eighty years ago in bringing electric to the rural areas of Jasper County, we are excited to be able to step in and provide a service to our members and beyond with, with putting up broadband or fiber onto our already elaborate infrastructure. I know as you all have gone through the information, at a minimum, we expect to have a capital investment of forty-five million dollars. We will be going in and working with all of our infrastructure that is up in the most underserved or non-served areas of Jasper County immediately, within the next three years. We expect to have this project complete where we will distribute fiber on our own, our current infrastructure and bring it all the way to the home. At that point, we are excited to partner or be partnering up with PRTC, Palmetto Rural Telephone Cooperative, another cooperative like ourselves. And they will be working as the internet service provider to bring the internet into the home and serve as, as the, the purchase point for, for those who don't have broadband to bring it into their home. We're excited. There's more to come. I know that we are, will likely surpass that forty-five million dollar threshold with regards to capital investment, but we greatly appreciate the county's support. We always afford in partnering with you to make our county and our communities stronger and better.
Aye.
Madam Chair, we do need to have a public hearing.
Yes. Public hearing, this is public hearing. Did anybody send anything in on the public hearing?
No ma'am, nothing was received in our office.
Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd be proud to make that motion. I'd also like to, before I make the motion, thank Palmetto Electric for their continued commitment to supporting not only Jasper but our entire region. They, for decades now, have invested millions in our community to create capital investments, job creation and many other economic development opportunities. And this is just another example of their commitment. So I want to personally thank them on behalf of our county, our Southern Carolina Alliance and all the citizens on what they're doing. It's really amazing how generous the co-op is and their vision and for our community and their investment. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the Palmetto Electric campaign that we've been presented tonight.
Aye. Do I hear a second?
I hear a second.
Okay, properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, Andrew Folger, the second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, to adopt a new organizational chart. Any?
Madam Chair, members of council, thank you. You have before you an ordinance that proposes to adopt a new organization chart. We've had some discussion about it. This is up for second reading. Basically, it builds the Development Services Division that has been lacking for some years, and it reduces the amount of direct reports to the county administrator, I'm thankful to say, from twelve direct reports down to eight direct reports. So we think this will be a much more functional family tree, if you will, to, to work for you to accomplish your goals. Respectfully requesting your consideration of having second reading this evening.
Any questions? Call for a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Do I hear? Properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Right. Chief, new business chief, Russell Wells, COVID update.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the council. Before you, on your screen, you'll see the most updated COVID statistics for our county. As you can see from our last report from last Monday, the state of South Carolina has had an increase up to fourteen point nine percent. Jasper County continued its climb over the, the week between our last report to twenty-three point one percent. There was a jump in the total number of tests that were provided. So the two-week timeframe in which we're evaluating today, we've jumped from thirteen hundred to just over seventeen hundred tests, and we're still at twenty-three point one percent on our positivity rate. Let me see if I can get it to cooperate and scroll down for me. As you can see, our daily case count has, has continued to rise. Just as of August eleventh, we've peaked out at thirty-eight new cases. The benefit is, is that we've, we've, we've had zero additional deaths in our community since our last briefing. As you can see, the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control will be conducting Uh, as you can see, the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control, uh, will be conducting, uh, community-based, uh, COVID testing. Uh, there's no appointment necessary. There's no fees or charges to get that test. And. Uh, again, we'd like to remind everybody that any, any person that is twelve years of age and older is eligible to receive it. Uh, within this briefing package, uh, that you will be getting electronically. Again, list out all of the places that you can, um, obtain a vaccine. And what we'll do is we'll scroll down to our latest vaccine data, uh, slight increases in our, in our zip codes. Um, those numbers are reflected by our zip codes here. Again, two-nine-nine-two-seven and two-nine-nine-three-six, Ridgeland and Hardyville zip codes. Are, uh, are leading the charge in our vaccine. And then again, what we would like to do is we'd like to remind everyone that, uh, we are doing community-based vaccine clinics. Our, uh, first event will be at Kingdom Touch Ministries here in the town of Ridgeland at sixty-seven fourteen Tillman Road. That will be Saturday, August twenty-first from ten AM to two PM. And, uh, they will be the Pfizer vaccine. So all that are twelve years of age and older, uh, will be eligible to receive the vaccine. Uh, the other thing that we want to, um. Is to share with you today is that public health preparedness has indicated based on our request. That all of our vaccine clinics, all of our vaccine clinics, uh, will be able to accommodate. All of our residents that are twelve years of age and older. So, uh, again, we're going to be working, uh. To publish these dates again. Uh, we're waiting on DHEC to actually get us the, uh, the finalized. Uh, publications and drafts, um, also in Spanish format, so we can work with our Latino community and get that out for them as well. And with that, uh, we'll yield the floor.
Okay, go back up on those sites.
Yes, ma'am. Stand by. I will do that for you. All right. On the sites. Here we go.
Okay. This Robert's Bill, recent area Kingdom Touch, okay?
Yes, ma'am. So that we.
So they're going to be at touch on the twenty-first?
Yes, ma'am. So each, each of these events are a two-vaccine series. So what we have done is we have scheduled them, um, in accordance. So. On Saturday, August twenty-first, uh, from ten to two, and then based on the, the spacing out. Uh, Saturday, September eleventh will be the second vaccine. Now, Kingdom Touch is working with, uh, the Board of Education. And will be conducting a first vaccine series on, um, on Saturday, September eleventh. So the benefit is, is regardless of where you are in the vaccine series, um, they still will work with you to get your, your vaccines. Even, even if any, any of our citizens show up.
They. Um, what I was getting ready to say, they have another vaccine site on the twenty-first also.
Okay.
Be down there to that, um. Pluto, where that Pluto Club used to be.
Yes, ma'am.
There on the twenty-first also.
Okay.
Okay.
The other thing is, is that we want to let our, our, our citizens know that, uh, that we're going to be deploying out digital message boards. Um, they may have seen them throughout the community when we were conducting our, uh, community-based testing events. Uh, they're similar to what the Department of Transportation uses message boards along the highways. Um, so. We'll be deploying them a couple of days in advance of the clinic just to remind the citizens, uh, in that area that, uh, will be conducting these. Community-based vaccines. Again, we've, uh, we've got Ridgeland, Robertville, Levy, and Hardyville communities. Uh, on the schedule now, uh, we're working through some, uh, some final little hiccups and I shouldn't say. Uh, some documentation and, uh, we'll be ready to roll.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Uh. Chief Wells. I, I've been, I, the last set of, uh, addresses that you gave us from the last meeting on the ninth. I gave that to, uh. Fit, and I also gave it to, uh. Agapi.
Mm-hmm.
What they're doing is, uh, when they have a food distribution, they're including that. In the food distribution. So I'm just letting you know that if you could give me, to me, or if you can do it yourself, whatever you want to do, uh, I give it to them. So we're giving the people. A list of where they can go for testing and for, for the shots. So if you can, if you remember, see anybody that's going to have a food distribution like United Way, or I talked to South Carolina Food Bank. And they're all for it. Uh, they just have to get the information. So just, you know, help you out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Kimberly Burgess, old business. Consideration of proposed expenditure of CSL F R F. Our funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. Uh, I really, we've talked about. Possible uses of the, uh, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And I'm actually here tonight to, uh. Get your approval to move forward with the, uh. Process necessary to provide premium pay for certain employees who work during the declared South Carolina Public Health Emergency Period. Which would be from March sixteenth until June, um. Eleventh, or it was actually June seventh, but our payroll ran through June eleventh. Um, using the Corona State Local and, uh, again, using those funds, the Corona State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. The, um, Department of Treasury has issued an interim, what they call an interim final rule. And it. Provides for, um, payments. To, uh, receive, maybe used by the county to provide premium pay to eligible workers. Performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergency. They also provided, uh, a definition. Of what an eligible worker was, and it was a worker that needed to, um, those workers that needed to maintain continuity of operations. Of essential critical infrastructure sectors. And essential work was. Any work involving regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items that were handled by others. So we'd like to, if it is the council's desire to remunerate those essential workers as defined with, by the Department of Treasury. Or the elevated health risks that they faced during the public health emergency. Um, we'd like request that the council approve staff to begin the process of identifying those employees. And whose positions required in-person contact with members of the public. And therefore could not perform their duties from home or remotely and to calculate an amount deemed premium pay. Not to exceed three dollars per hour for the hours worked for the period March sixteenth, twenty twenty to June eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And that the total premium play, pay would include FICA taxes and appropriate retirement amounts, and that it would not exceed two million dollars. If, if that is approved, then the balance remaining from the total fiscal recovery funds. Would be approximately three point nine, should the premium pay, um, equal two million dollars.
Madam Chair, if I could just add, um, that Ms. Burgess is making the request. Of course, we would bring that back to you with specific amounts. Uh. And perhaps the individuals that we had slated to receive the pay and the amounts and so forth. But we need to get your concurrence that that is one of the items that you want to do. Uh, and move fairly quickly with this so that we can get it in place. There's a process, as you mentioned, and the process is. Doing the staff work to bring that back to you for official approval, uh, in an ordinance. Or resolution.
Okay. Any questions? And we talked about this before. All right, to get you all started, get you all started, I'm going to call for a motion.
So move, madam chair.
Go ahead, hear a second.
Second.
And properly move in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Better get you started, and they'll be, come back to us when they get that part of it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Burgess, council members, comment. Let's start with. Let's start with Mr. Kemp.
Hey, uh, just wanted, my first thing is I'm working with the South, uh, the Sun City Veterans Association. Uh, they volunteered, uh, or they've donated fifteen, that fifteen hundred dollars to the Korean, uh, monument in. Washington DC. Uh, they have a wall just like the veterans administer, uh, the veterans', uh, wall. And we have, uh, four people that were killed in action during the Korean War. And I'm bringing this to your attention. So we're trying to find families if they still exist, so we can at least tell them that they're. They're going to be put on, their loved ones are going to be put on the wall. I'm going to give you the names, uh. Joseph Williams. Charlie Browning. James Hill Junior. And William Clyde Preacher. If anybody knows them, uh, or knows a family, uh, they would give me a call and tell me so we can give their name. I tell them that we're just doing nothing except trying to tell them that they're going to be on the wall. I've also talked to the Veterans Affair and they're helping out. So we're just trying to put a push on it. Or if you heard of anybody else that we don't know about. That was, was killed in action during the Korean War, please let us know. Uh, I went to.
You want to, where are you? Mr. Kemp. Okay, he's gone. Um, moving that along. Councilman Atkins.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
To our Lord and Savior, how he keeping us, carrying us forward without his blessing, we won't be able to do anything. Also, I want to thank God for blessing me to be able to go to the conference on Hilton Head. Leave Hilton Head and rent the Bufer, took some classes, and it was a success. I learned a lot. And still trying to get a lot done in the county. County's moving forward. Landscape began to pop. Um, again, I see Councilman Atkins will be riding the property. Um, I don't want nobody to take it the wrong way. Just in friendship, like I said, this is business. The county is growing and it's time for the county to look a lot better in its landscape and these buildings. And each and every one. Be blessed. Stay safe. And stay protected.
Thank you. Mr. Sowes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, um, just, uh. Keep the Wall family, Mr. Weldon, while we gain in our thoughts and prayers. Um. We know that, uh, Kendall is our executive director, his daughter, uh, the Jasper County Chamber of Commerce. Family, but just want to keep them in our prayers and thoughts as they, uh, have his services tomorrow. Um. I, uh, attended the Hardyville Recreation Center, uh, ribbon cutting, uh, and, uh, banquet, um. Last week, and, uh, it was a big success, nice turnout, and I must, uh, commend the city on their, uh, efforts. That is quite an accomplishment. And a great resource for our community. Uh, I encourage those who haven't been to see it, please go by and tour it and take advantage of that. Uh, here in our community, it's a, a great, uh, resource for, uh, recreational activities for, for people of all ages. It's really, really nice. Um, and, uh, we received a report tonight from the Southern Carolina Alliance, uh, CEO Danny Black and his team. I want to commend them for the job they're doing on, uh, working with our prospects and developing our sites. For capital investment and job creation. They're doing a phenomenal job, and we're fortunate to have them. Uh, in, in charge of what's going on with our economic development. They're doing a great job. And thank Palmetto Electric again for what they're doing. Uh, huge community partner there, and they always are doing great things for us here in the county. Um. But, uh, that's really about all I have to report, Madam Chair. Thank you for all that you're doing too, and the time and effort you put into being our, our leader.
Thank you, Marty. Um, I would like to share the same concurrence with, um, to Kendall, uh, and Julie. Um, with the passing of Mr. Weldon. Um, it's a, it's just sad that something can come along and just take us out so quick. Um, we want to continue to lift the family up in prayer. And several of the council members asked of me to give a report on the coroner's office. I'm not going to do it tonight because I want the paperwork to go along with what I'm saying. Um, there's been a lot of stuff back and forth out there, back and forth about what we are not doing for the coroner. We are doing more than we supposed to be doing for the court. And we want the taxpayers to know that. We want you to know that. The coroner is not on an hourly salary. He's not getting paid seven dollars and some cents an hour. He's paid on salary. He is paid according to what the other coroners will pay. And. We want you to know that. We have to take everything and do it the right way. Because we want to be fair to everybody. Now, we're not going to buy you a new SUV, four-wheel drive. For almost a hundred thousand dollars for you to ride around in and drive around. Because when you go to the conferences and stuff, when you got to go to Myrtle Beach, or you got to go to Charleston or Columbia. You know you want to look good. It ain't about looking good. We got to save Jasper County taxpayers. And it's a whole lot more. Some of them was on Facebook talking about, um, didn't have a van to carry the bodies. He doesn't need a vehicle, period, because he hires a transport company. That carries the bodies, even from a scene to the mall. We are spending thousands of dollars, and we are going to work on that. We're going to come out with something. With a contract or something to protect ourself. And that's all I'm going to say tonight. If you want more information, contact me. I'll take the time. To, um, talk to you or meet you and give it to you, but not so much meeting now because I am definitely scared of COVID. Um, but I'll talk to you. But a lot that you are hearing, reading on Facebook, it's not true. And also in the same breath, we want to send our deepest sympathy out to the coroner. Because he lost the first cousin. Um, on Saturday night. He got killed up in Esther, and we want to pray for them also. So. Um, that, that's it on the coroner. I'll get the Pandy, and I'll get the report because. I want to put things in people's hands. I want them to see that we are not kidding. We are sending, we are, we are doing what we supposed to be doing. Um, we just can't give you a car to ride around in and burn up all the county gas. And I want to, I want, I want to get you all a copy of that also, so you can see really what's going on. And I asked for a copy of the bodies that we have picked up in this county so far and whatever. I hadn't received that information yet. So it's a lot there. So before you get out there and you start yapping. And saying things you don't know anything about and grabbing hold to the council people and whatever. Uh, telling them this and telling them that, please think it through or twice, or find out first before you make your comments. uh, telling them this and telling them that, please think it through, or twice, or find out first before you make your comments. We love all of you, and we hope God will continue to bless you. So at this time, I'm gonna call for the administrator's report.
Madam Chair, members of council, thank you. I know the hour is late and I won't belabor this. Uh, I've provided a packet, my two-week progress report and an administrator's report for you. The only thing I think probably needs to be mentioned to the public is item number one on the report, which was about a newspaper of general circulation, just for those who are fans of following the county's legal ads and public hearing advertisements. We have traditionally advertised in the Jasper County Sun and have received notice that the Sun will no longer be a, uh, printed publication. Uh, therefore, uh, we are gonna be going forward, publishing our legal ads in the Buford Gazette and/or the Island Packet, uh, which are daily publications, which will make the advertising a little bit easier for us. But just wanted everyone to know that in the public, that that's where our notices, public hearings, legal ads will be going forward. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, the rest of the information is submitted for year review. I'm happy to answer your questions as you may have, but that concludes my report.
Okay. We thank you. We thank you, and I know you had a long, hard last week and came back today and was faced with the same, um, thing, but we thank you for all that you do. And we are parents, we are asking you to please be patient with the school. They're having problems with bus drivers, having problems with bus drivers. Children are getting home later than they should get home. But if you have a car, go pick your children up or take your children to school. This will help. And especially those of you who say you got to go to work, well, take them to school before you go to work. We're asking you to work along with the school system. We know it's some angry people out there because their friends no longer drive for the school system, but we got to do what we gotta do. And you have to learn that you, everything is not gonna go your way. And if it's going good, say it's going good and work with them. Don't try to bring everybody down. Please, parents, please. Let's work with the school system. God Anderson is doing a good job. You've gotten on Facebook, you've called it from monkeys to dogs and all kind of stuff. Nobody is stupid. We know who you're talking about, so let's knock it off. And don't come for me, 'cause I'll come for you. No, none of them coming for me. Don't come for me, please. So please, let's work with the school system. And at this time, I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn. Nobody wanna go home? Everybody on mute. Atkins. Call for a motion to adjourn. It is, it is up there. Well, John Kemp, Ben Go, um, Alvin. Alvin. Alvin.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All for motion to adjourn.
Why do you think messing up the night?
Calling for a motion to adjourn. I think it's the weapon.
I call for a motion to adjourn from the night till the next night.
I'm saying it.
Y'all be blessed.
Be blessed. See y'all at next